The first year of that, we saw about seventy-five percent of the people we arrested that were on supervised probation were coming in from out of town and committing crime or crimes. In the last year, that's reduced down to about twenty-five percent of people coming out of town to do that. And the number of arrests that we've made last year compared to the year before went down a little bit. So we are seeing a little bit of relief in that, but you know, you can't let a whole, thousands of people out of prison and expect that all of those people, especially in the economy that we have, you know, there's not a whole lot of jobs. And so these folks are going to go out and try to find ways to either meet their habits or to support themselves or get food or whatever it is. You're not going to have that many people coming out of the system and expect you're not going to have any impacts of that. And so, you know, there's a number of studies and research and things that are going on right now. You know, part of the positive picture of that program is that through that, there's been a little bit of funding that's come down to local departments to try to, as we push from state parole down to county probation. And I think long-term, we'll have a better result with county supervision than state supervision because the probation officers live in our communities and the places that they're doing this and they have a real stake in that where that wasn't as true, I think, with the state system. And the state system was so bureaucratic that it was hard to get things done. And so with the county system, you know, I can call the chief of county probation and get her on the phone right now and deal with an issue that we might have mutually together. We have two folks from probation in the back there that you can talk to about that. But they have received some funding to do some things, to hire more people. And one of the things that that has done to help us is that they've now assigned a full-time probation officer to our city. And so he goes out and works with our people and we go out and try to deal with those people. And I think that's probably part of the reason that we've seen an improvement in the last year than in the first year because we have more people on the street because of that because we now have an officer through grant funding and a probation officer. And then he's here to deal with any issues. So rather than trying to get somebody on the phone at night or something like that, he'll answer our phone right away because he works here, you know, he has a stake in what's going on. So I think those things are improving, but yeah, it, you know, when you let that many people out in a system that really doesn't rehabilitate people, that's, it's going to have an impact. And I think we're, you know, we're doing a partnership program with probation and with several local nonprofits here in the city, that Lieutenant Marie Self-Start, that tries to get folks redirected once they come out of the system. So, you know, if we can help them to find jobs or help them to market themselves better, help them to get the education they need, then it's a like, a higher likelihood that they're not going to recommit. One of the great things about this program, we're having trouble getting people into it, but the nonprofit groups have worked with a local college to have free welding classes for some of the people that are, that are in that program. And so doing things like that, that you can get them training and then get them in the workforce is going to help us to make sure that we can try to keep them from continuing to reoffend. So any things that we do like that are positive. I think we have a pretty good program in place here and I think that that partnership is growing. And we're learning a little bit more about how to try to reduce those types of things together as we work through this issue. It's not an issue that's going to go away. It's, you know, the governor has gotten a reprieve on releasing anybody else for two years, but at some point, this is going to catch up with us again. We're going to see what we can do to try to mitigate some of the problems that we have. And what was the last one that you?
About volunteers. I know that you had various programs like the Park Rangers and the Citizens Patrol and the pilots for the airplane that we have here.
Yeah, the volunteer program in this community is more vibrant than you're going to see most anywhere else. As I've gone around and talked to other chiefs and seen other programs, most places have less volunteers than they have employees. We have almost twice as many volunteers than we have employees. We have about a hundred and forty full and part-time employees in the police department. We have about two-hundred-and-fifty active volunteers. And so that speaks very highly to our community, the type of people who want to give back. So we do, we have our air program, all of the pilots are volunteers, so they donate their time to come out and fly for us.
You said that the F R flying only or is that I F R or, could you say it about flying at night or?
It's only daytime operation.
Okay.
Commander Lyons helped start that program here in the city. So, you know, to have, it would, it would be far too expensive for us to try to put out an air program if we didn't have volunteer pilots. So their volunteerism is great for us. We do have a park ranger program so that people can come on and go out and patrol the parks and do other things. We have citizens volunteers, they go out and do vacation checks, they go out and do just extra patrols in the community during Christmas season. They go out to the shopping malls and do extra patrols, high visibility patrols out there. We have some that work in our building there doing administrative work. We have one volunteer that follows up on all of our thefts and burglaries and tracks some of that information for us. You know, we have Animal Control has a number of dozens of volunteers that, you know, I think we have, what do we have, one and a half employees in Animal Control? Two and a half? Two and a half? So for the amount of animals that we take in, for a city of seventy thousand, having that number of employees is very, very small. And the only way we get that comes through the volunteers that go out there and help take care of the animals, help take care of the shelter. We have great volunteers that, for animals that need to be rescued, can get them out to a rescue unit. You know, there's a fee involved with that, but they always raise that through donations so it's never a cost to the city. Just great, great people who want to give back. And just about anything you can think of volunteering for, you can volunteer for in this city. We're open to that. We have a citizen academy, volunteer academy going on right now. I think there's sixteen people in it currently. So we try to put those on on a fairly regular basis and we keep getting more and more people that want to be involved. We have one gentleman who volunteers his time and installs all of our M D Cs in our program. We have, you know, we have a significant records backup when I got here. And we have a retired records person that comes in and volunteers, you know, numerous hours, almost like an employee to help with those things. So, you know, the amount of time that people put in and the energy they put in is incredible. So we are very grateful for that. Thank you for giving me a chance to speak about that. Any other questions?
On the panhandlers, when you cite them, do they show up in court or do they just blow it off?
Sometimes, some of them do, some of them don't. But the court system's so bogged down right now that it's tough to get things through the system and for infractions, we can't just go out and arrest somebody when they don't show up for a ticket. They have to get so many. And then even if we arrest them and take them to jail, then, you know, the jail is looking at, okay, who's the worst criminals that we can keep? We only have this many beds, everybody else is going out. So those people are going back out the door. You know, it's, it's a tough thing to get a hold of from criminal enforcement perspective, but it's a better thing to try to educate people. And if we stop giving them money, then they'll stop trying to do that.
We know that's not going to happen. There's just people are going to give money.
We're going to keep trying. We're going to keep trying and educate people.
Do the tickets seem like any kind of deterrent to them or do they?
Not much. We had, we had one panhandler in the last year that our downtown officer cited three times in the same day. So, you know, when, when he tells you, you know, I might go in and do a day for my tickets, but I can make a couple hundred dollars a day, you know, they're going to keep doing that.
What do you think they make during the day? Is anybody attracted?
Well, you have to go based on their word and it depends, you know, some of them might only get a little bit. But we've talked to people that have gotten several hundred dollars, five hundred dollars in a day, just panhandling.
In Redlands?
In various, all different places, Redlands and other places. It's, you know, people, you know, their, your heartstrings get tugged on a little bit and you want to help and, you know, people have good hearts and so they, especially in this community, you know, they really want to help people. And so, you know, you just keep doing that and why would you want to work when you even get, you know, two, three, four hundred, five hundred dollars a day?
Tax-free?
Yeah, tax-free, just to the general.
Central hours?
Yeah, not many hours, you know, it's not like somebody working an eight-hour day. Yes?
Good evening, how you doing? What do you think the impact of health faith-based organizations is when they come out of prisons or are in parole? As you mentioned, the well-being to work program, I was involved with that, that's an outstanding program. And it's helped a lot of, how to say, indigenous or homeless people follow the streets. And usually, I work with veterans because I was my coach of veterans and all that other thing along with it. I've met a whole bunch of vets that are even in these prisons or not probation, but it works in the community. So what do you think about faith-based communities?
Well, I think there are a number of faith-based communities that are doing great things here. The program that I talked about with the supervision of the parole and probation folks, we partnered all those faith-based organizations that we work with. The Blessings Center does a lot of work in that area and so they help us out a lot. Pastor Jones does a lot of things out in the community, so he helps us out a lot. Trinity Church, they're going out and doing things in the community to not only try to help people, provide education, especially for young people through MICA House, but they're also trying to do adopt parks, adopt neighborhoods at a church so that they can come out and do that. The LDS Church was one of the main drivers for the Heritage Park and did a lot of work out there. So there's a lot of good things going on with faith-based organizations and I'd like to find ways to tap into that a little bit more, a little bit better. But there are a lot of really good things going on. And I think, you know, apart from that, we're not going to be as successful with it because those are people that want to be out involved. They have a ready cadre of volunteers that are willing to go out and do things. And so the more that we can kind of tap into that and hone that a little bit, I think, is probably a good thing for the community.
I just have one question. Now, as far as veterans concerned, I have a heart of veterans, I've been with a lot of veterans. I ran into quite a few vets who actually go to the center, lesson center and other centers and are looking for some, some direction. And I can usually do, I can direct them to V A mobile end-up, but it's kind of hard to get them there. Usually, certain PTSD, drugs, they're into crime. And to kind of connect right now with, how to connect with family and community as far as officers are concerned and partners concerned, because when they come and talk and they get to the V A system and they work, it's going to be, some of the problems they have in community, some will be alleviated by the V A, especially with the families involved. So I'm not sure how we can deal with that as far as your department's concerned.
Yeah, you know, I think part of that is tapping into groups like these things to partner with, you know, we, we do, if we have somebody that's in that condition, we have our community policing officers that will try to get them hooked up with a V A or with a group that helps veterans. So we do tap into those types of resources. You know, it's sometimes a little bit hard because some of these faith-based and other organizations may not have people that are really qualified to offer the services that these folks need. But we do need to find better ways to tap into helping the people that are coming back, the young men and women that are coming back from war and suffering from some of these issues. And so we always need to be aware of how we can try to do that. And I think the program, this welding program, we might be able to expand things like that to help them out if they need job training. There's other things that we can probably do to look at doing that as a community. You know, it's really sad to see some of the things that happen with the people that have risked their selves to serve our country and protect us. So, you know, one of the things that we did to make sure that we can handle those situations a little bit better is in the last year, we put all of our officers through crisis intervention training and how to deal with folks that have PTSD or have mental illness so that we get a little bit better first on that so that we're not, you know, having some kind of incident that escalates into something that didn't have to happen. So I think that type of training for our officers helps in being able to handle and de-escalate those situations better. There is, you know, some specific things that they can learn to do that de-escalate somebody that's a PTSD victim over maybe some other folks that are just off through beds or something like that.
So what do you think about training for officers at the local V A itself? Because they have courses, there's one coming up for twenty-seven, the other one's spoken.
Yeah, we're open to that if you want to provide us that information. The training that we did in the last year is all post-certified stuff that we do, but we always are looking for other things that we can do to expand our ability to be more effective. And our community policing officers often engage in those types of things and then can bring that back and spread that out to the rest of the organization. Any other questions?
Yeah. Can you share a little why on the, what's your, in the near future is going to happen with the community layout on, that you're going to be standing out, opposite of the community? You know, if we just go out of control, is that position going to be eliminated or is that going to replace us over now or is there going to be somebody in the community?
That Liz is going to continue to be there. She'll be there at least through this year and we'll reevaluate at the end of the year. There's no talk of doing away with that position. I think her position and the position that Jennifer Ramstead does with the downtown liaison are essential to us. The things that they do keep our officers from having to respond to bigger problems because they can go out and actually give, you know, the long-term care and chronic problems, the service that we need to do to keep that from having to be a place for patrol officers to respond to. So I wish I could expand the program, but we definitely won't decrease the program at this point.
What about travel monitoring?
Yes?
How effective, excuse me, have you found cameras in neighborhoods to deter crime? And I know a couple of years ago, our community development was talking with someone from the city about placing cameras in our area and then the person left and kind of lost track of that. What happened?
Do you want to address that? Sure.
First, to answer the first question, our camera program is very effective. Most of ours have been deployed in more commercial areas and things like that, just out of a, we're trying to place them in areas where we have the most need at this point because they're very, very expensive and so we want to make sure that we have a feasible thing for them. As far as communities go, you know, we're, we're open to discussing that with the, with the communities. Do you live up in University Grove?
Yes.
Yeah, I remember us having that conversation, it wasn't me personally, but I remember the department having that conversation. And I don't know how it stopped, but they weren't willing to underwrite the cost of the cameras at the end of the day.
Well, we were, we were under the impression there was going to be a complimentary one placed there for a period of time.
Yeah, that would be up to the company. I didn't hear that. That may be accurate, but I didn't hear.
And we, you know, we have to start thinking about the, the whole network as a whole. You know, we have, you know, over a hundred and thirty cameras now and we have one, our dispatch center to watch them in. And, you know, at some point, we're going to have more cameras on the public handle, but for neighbors that are experienced in something like that, you know, it's definitely an open conversation to, to talk about that. The board would like to discuss that again, you know, we'd be happy to enter into those conversations. You know, if it is something that has to be funded, we don't have a camera budget, our camera system has been built off of grant funds that we've been able to obtain. And that's how we've done it so far. But they would fund something for a particular neighborhood, they funded for, you know, our really high traffic areas and critical infrastructure. So a lot of them you'll see are along Redlands Boulevard or near the freeway and that sort of, that area. Can I answer your question?
And they have had a significant impact on crime here. We have solved a number of crimes with that. You saw a year and a half or so ago, there was a video taken of the homicide that occurred downtown. We probably wouldn't have solved that crime without having the camera footage that we had. We could put that information out and get information back from other police agencies on who they thought that was. So that was very helpful. I know that we did one where we caught the sight of a car that did a bank robbery and then put that out, our high manager put that information out right away. And then that night, the officer had a little bit of proactive time and he went out just looking for the car and he found it. And then we were able to sit on that car and make the arrest of that person. We had, since I've been here, a fairly significant vandalism spree, it was about thirty-five thousand or so dollars in vandalism that they did. And based on camera footage that we picked up, that's how we solved that crime. So there's a lot of those types of things that they really benefit us for. You know, the nice thing about this community is that the city's only had to, with the grant money, buy a certain amount of cameras. A lot of the cameras that we have access to are private cameras that people give us access to. So if they have like a jewelry store downtown, wants us to have access to that, they can give us the rights to do that. And then if they have a problem there, we can pull that up and look at that. You know, the video systems for private use are going down, down, down all the time. You can go to Costco and get one fairly inexpensively and you can wire that to come to your iPad or your iPhone and lurch into the things that are going on. You're probably going to see a lot of people having those types of things. You know, the issue with drones, the FAA is going to release, reduce some of the standards for that in 2015. So you're probably going to see more of those types of things out there that have cameras on them. I'm sure that, you know, I already know that in some communities, real estate agents are using those to take full panoramic views of things of the houses that they're selling. You know, we have a number of different groups that might use that for special events. You know, I suspect the media is probably going to get some of those things for their use in certain instances. So you're going to see a lot more of that stuff coming next year when the prices, the prices are starting to come down and when the regulations are reduced, you're going to see a lot more of that. And then, you know, that's all easy cameras. Now, they have stuff that just looks like a bug or a bird now that's pretty small and has pretty good visibility from the camera. It's just, technology gets incredible. So if you see a bird sitting outside your window, it's not a bird. Do we have any Facebook questions, Dana?
All of them you've answered, so.
Any other questions?
Just one more. Yeah, in your earlier presentation, you said you made reference to the increase of fourteen percent arrests. Are there any stats as to how many of those folks were residents or out of towners?
You know, we don't have that information already available. We've only tracked that for the supervised released folks, not for every person. So it's more anecdotal than anything. And there's probably a good number on both sides of that equation. But that is a pretty significant number of arrests and that speaks to the great job that our officers are doing out there on the street every day. They're out diligently looking for people and trying to stop crime from happening and then responding to crime when it does happen. And we've gotten, as we've, you know, since I've been here, we've reduced our response time for emergency calls from eight and a half minutes to now about five forty-eight or so. So that helps us when we can get to a scene faster. Obviously, it's more likely that we're going to catch the suspects. The cameras help us when we have camera operators, you know, they can see, we've had four inquiries that have happened like in the downtown bank or something, and they can watch them on the cameras and tell the officers where they're going. So all of those types of things have helped us to increase those numbers, but most of it is the hard work of the neighborhood and the police department out there, really doing a good job out there for the red light market. Yes, ma'am?
Does procedure give that person that you arrest is illegal?
The same is for everybody else. So they are, for us, once they get to the jail, then the jail does all of the things with vetting who people are and whether they're illegals and whether they can be here or not. And then they make the arrangements, if arrangements are to be made with immigration, to have the people detained. But we don't do that at the local level. Vicki, do you have a question?
I was very late, so if you've already addressed these, I'll get the information from somebody else. I was curious about a couple of different things. First of all, how the drug problem at the high school is going in terms of now compared to maybe three or five years ago? I'd love, you've probably already addressed this, I would love to know the reality of the whole tank thing. And I know it's not a tank.
It's not a tank.
I know it's not a tank.
It's not a tank, Vicki. So the camera's not a tank.
I know that. And I, and that was part of the reason I wanted to be here tonight, just, you know, because there's so much floating around. So what's involved in, in all of that? And then just a last thing, do you think it would be a good idea for us to really get behind having a skate park here for these kids? I, I mean, I don't, you know, I go back a long time on skate parks and I, all of a sudden, I'm thinking, I'm not sure I'm seeing as many kids skating anymore, but I sure wish we had a facility like that here. But maybe it's not, I don't know, maybe you don't see any of it. So take your choice and if you've already covered all of them, I'll ask somebody else.
The drug question, we did answer, but I'll, I'll give you a brief overview and then be happy to talk to you about that and our ballistic rescue vehicle.
You guys got a tank?
But, but the drug problem has improved a little bit at the high schools, you know, when, and I shared with these folks that when I got here, we'd had a number of heroin overdoses in a ten-month period of time. And so as a result of an investigation that we did, we were able to reduce that for a significant period of time. We still don't see anywhere near that now. And we've done a couple of major drug investigations on heroin dealers, meth dealers to mitigate some of those problems. So I think we're doing a good job of keeping track of some of those things. You know, kids are kids and they're always going to find ways to do different things. And you see, you know, like they started using these bath salts and people are coming out with these things that just make people crazy. And young people just don't care what they put in their bodies, I guess. But we've, we've done an ordinance to try to reduce that and outlaw the bath salts and some of the other synthetic type drugs that kids can get over the counter. So I think we're doing a good job at that. We've regionalized our narcotics team a little bit more, so it's now us, the sheriff's department and Beaumont Police Department so that we have more staffing to do more high-level investigations and things. So I can follow up more with you afterwards, but those are some of the things that we're doing. The skate park, you know, that's really something up to the community. I think in general, you can say that things that you can do to occupy kids are positive, they're not going to be out doing mischievous things when they have something positive to do. So I think for communities, those things are usually positive. But it's really up to this community whether they want to rally behind that. And I don't really know whether there's enough kids that would use it. I suspect that there would be because they come from all over the place to do that.
Is that something that there's ever grant money available for to write?
These days, not very much. Every once in a while, you might get something, but lately, you know, even like for a long time, we could get technology grants that would help us to get our M D Cs and the cameras and things. And all of that stuff is drying up as, as, you know, the tax dollars have gone down and things have been more restrictive. There's just very, very few law enforcement and community grants out there. And the ones that they do have are just so overly burdensome to try to get. You know, there's a couple of grants out there that are, have some positive things about them, but it would cost us several hundred thousand dollars just to do the research and preparation to get into the grant game before they'd even consider our grants. So those, those things are non-starters for us. So a lot of that has dried up. As things start to get back up again, I think you'll probably see an uptick in some of that and we can always look for things like that to do. But most of the grants are around parks and things are done towards sustainability and a lot of lighting and those types of things to reduce energy costs. So you see some of those types of things still out there, but not a whole lot else.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
I had just one more and thank you very much for all of your times. I appreciate that, all the officers that have time for that because I know you guys are busy. However, speaking of skate parks, seems like our bicycle lanes have turned into skate parks. We have a lot of skaters and skateboard riders going down those, you know, bicycle lanes. And I'm all for bicyclists, I'm on the Redlands Bicycle Committee in which, they're going to be coming up here pretty soon, a little closer. But, but I've seen a lot of skateboarders going down those lanes and I've seen traffic hit their brakes pretty hard or go over to the oncoming lanes because they're, they don't know whether the skater's going to just go back and forth and skate in that bicycle lane or if they're going to go out traffic and stuff like that. I've seen joggers going down in the bicycle lanes. What are your thoughts on that?
You know, if there's somebody that's a traffic hazard, call us, we'll come out as soon as we can. You know, as, you know, five years ago, when we went from ninety-eight officers to eighty officers, we had to disband our traffic units. We don't have traffic officers out there on a regular basis. The only time that we put them out is on overtime and those types of things when that's available or when we have a problem. So we don't have the same man or staffing that we had five years ago so that we could address some of those types of issues. But, you know, we, we do our best to respond to those things as quickly as we can. We certainly don't want to see anybody getting hit. So I always say, just call us when you see that and we'll come out as quickly as we can to try to mitigate that problem. It's a lot more work to have to do a traffic accident report afterwards than come and tell them to get out of the road. Yes, ma'am?
Speaking of the bike lanes, you know how they have that solid yellow line? And if you've got a red light ahead of you and there's twelve cars in line, are you allowed to get, if there's no bikes coming, first can you scoot over and buzz on down?
Address that, Mike?
Is that a ticket?
No, you're not.
No.
No. Okay. Basically, about within a hundred feet of the intersection, that's when you can start merging over and getting there. But once the line starts breaking up, that's when you can start getting into the, into the bicycle lane. The reason it's solid there is to protect bicyclists.
But there's no bicycle coming, not even in sight.
You'd be surprised, they pump out quickly.
Any other questions? Yes, sir?
Yes, just one more question. How familiar are you with the cops clergy and children, over this line and items? I think it's gonna be starting 21st March, as faith-based community and the mayor's being involved, chief of police, I think, city council members. And I'm not really sure because I'm not that far involved in it right now, but are you pretty familiar with that?
Yes. Cops and Clergy Network is something that Jim Bearman, our former police chief, and Felix Jones started back in the late 90s. I was with San Bernardino at that time and I started a cops and clergy network in San Bernardino, so I'm very familiar with what goes on and how you do things. I'm helping Pastor Jones plan this year's event and, and found a church for him to do that at, at Ucaipa. And then we have officers who'll be involved in that, who'll be attending that and helping out with that. So it's, the Faith and Justice Summit essentially is what's gonna be held in March. And it's the faith-based groups and law enforcement officials coming together to talk about ways that we can work together to solve crime and to protect children. And so I think one of the keynote speakers is Stan Sniff, who's the sheriff in Riverside County. And then the San Bernardino Sheriff's Department will also have folks in, present at that event. But those are good events. Those are good ways for us to have open dialogue and to provide some training and so people that have been in trenches can provide information on how to work together. And then we're actively involved, we have officers attend the local cops and clergy meeting here and I have regular conversations with Pastor Jones on ways that we can work together to, to solve certain things.
Outstanding.
Any other questions? Thank you, guys, for showing up. Again, I know this is a commitment of your time and I appreciate that. I appreciate being able to get the word out. Anything you can do to help me do that is a good thing. And if anybody has any questions, you wanna follow up with afterwards, my staff and I